All right, let's get your update.
Uh, yes, John, so I did not receive anything from you. So again, today I continue working writing test cases. I have committed the code, Jerry, you can take a look there also.
I saw the PR wasn't marked ready for review. Okay, now it's ready. Got it. But no, no, it still says, it still says draft.
Okay, okay, let me make it ready for review.
Okay, that's the only reason I haven't touched it.
So John can be assigned some technical tasks also.
Yeah, we can do that. Um, Jerry, let's get your update.
Yeah, uh, so Facebook is fun of. For, we have the code done uh, for the like the invite via WhatsApp, like you hit the invite button and it's an invite via WhatsApp. I mean, it's a very, I call it a very crude draft, but I think it's enough to get past their review process. It kind of just shows code working to send an invite. Now, what we're gonna have now, what I've been struggling with is getting the proper permissions, which Danny's been helping me with. We actually just figured out that the correct way to get access to the developer portal for a business is to literally give yourself full access to the business page. So, right now, I I had to get access to the, like, full access to the Circle's business page. And now everything unlocked for WhatsApp. So now what I can do is I have the webhooks done, I have the front end code done and the back end code done. I need to upload some videos for the uh, I need to upload videos for the review process. And what I'll need from you, John, maybe is if there's invite text that you'd like to use when we send an invite via WhatsApp. That would be nice, cuz we're gonna have to create a message template. And that message template has to get approved by Facebook as well. So it's a lot of reviews that we're gonna have to be putting in today.
A lot of reviews say that last part.
Yeah, so we're gonna need reviews for the prod API key for WhatsApp. Because like right now, they only give you a temporary key, then you can only message like five numbers and that key's only good for like an hour. So, yeah, you you need to get full access and you need reviews. You need reviews on pretty much everything.
Then once it's approved, that's it, right?
Once it's approved, if you wanna make any changes to the invite text, you need another review.
Really?
Yep. Like, any little variable you change, once it becomes approved, requires another review.
Okay, can we get multiple reviewed at the same time?
Yeah, we can get, yeah, we can get them reviewed at the same time. Yeah, we can also have most multiple templates active at the same time, so.
Interesting, so the, so the text, not just the link and design, like image design, but the actual text that goes with it is also reviewed?
Yes, now let me show you, let me share the tab real quick. Because there are some things that we can do for like message templates. Oh wow, shared, oh god. Okay, let me go back to, I had to make like a test app. Another way I made a test app or a test business, so I could at least like test the code. Let's see. And then goes to this tab. And what's pretty cool is the templates are kind of like native integrated. So for this, this is like, hey there, check our fresh groceries, there's a picture here, which the picture we can use from our embedding. Like our our picture, we already have set up. So this would actually make sure the picture shows up. You can do this, and then you have a hyperlink that's built in to the message. It could be like, accept your invite or something.
Yeah, okay, interesting.
So it's like different stuff that we can change. Uh, stuff here, you can see the preview. Um, then there's a footer, it just kind of shows in gray text. You have been invited, it's all updating in real time on the right, and then website, and then this is where the link would be, could be like, accept your invite or whatever you want it to be. And then that would click, so.
And there'll be an image of, or, this is separate from the image?
Yeah, well, yeah, the image, you have media sample, image. Oh, interesting. I wonder if it only lets us do a static image. That sucks. It might only let us do a static image, like a static ticket.
That might be fine.
Now, one thing, well, this only works as if it's a deep link, so it's not a dynamic link, so it's not gonna work for um, for this, because they're inviting users that are not in the app yet. Conversion tracking, if you were wondering about it. Um, but yeah, there's a lot, a lot more rich control that we have that we can have it formatted a certain way in WhatsApp. So if you wanna take some time to look at it with either Danny or myself, we can kind of show you what's available.
Yeah, let's do that. And there's no cost per message, right?
I think there is, I think it's like, it's not a lot, I think it may be like, it's more than Twilio, I think it's like three, four cents a message. It's more than Twilio, but it's not crazy.
Okay, did you get anywhere with their, their support? When you, did you prompt them more on uh, what might be happening with us on the P two P side of it?
Yeah, I had a, um, I needed to message, I need to follow back with them, I think I might have a real person. Yeah, I need to follow up with that person. They want me to message them directly in WhatsApp. For some reason, I don't know if that's just so, can they can't say it's an AI? But I kind of got through with it, I was like, okay, none of this is helping, I need a person.
Right, right.
So I think I have somebody. Yeah, uh, templates and approvals, so all this approval, I think. Yeah, you need to submit evidence of your capabilities to send messages. Um, oh, this is my test account, that's why, this is done. And then yeah, I'll work with Danny if there's anything that I'm not able to provide here, but he can. But yeah, basically getting these reviews set out. Now, let me also go to Bitly, I know you're probably asking about Bitly. One of these clicks is me. Uh, but we had eleven clicks, it looks like.
Where, from?
Yeah, that's where I'm going.
We had a couple installs, I saw.
Which I see, okay, three is US, so it might be maybe somebody testing or people on a VPN. Yeah, like this one of two, one of them was me. But um, yeah, it looks like at least nine clicks from South Africa.
This is, well, no, that's about. Uh, is that about where we were proportionally?
Yeah, that's, that's about where we were.
Okay, what about installs? I saw two, where'd they come from?
I believe they're both America, I'm gonna confirm that real quick.
What dashboard is this?
This is Bitly.
So they show you the link, the text. Solo invites you to Circles. That shows up somewhere on that invite image, right?
What's that?
Where do they show up? I guess this is part of the metadata, right?
Part of the metadata. What do you mean, like?
All these invites with emojis?
Yeah, this, this is the page name.
But it's, it appears on it, right? On the ticket, on the invite.
Yeah, I can make sure with that.
Okay, you wouldn't have clicked twice on that top one, right? That came from?
No, I clicked once on it.
Look, it didn't get sent to you?
Uh, because I clicked it from here. Oh wait, I'm sure Simon said, because I'm able to go into here and went here, and there's a link.
I see, okay, so it got one click.
Yeah, you can see one from South Africa, one from the US, the US one was me.
I see, okay.
No, it doesn't give us that.
Okay, and then where were the installs?
Uh, installs. I see we have one from Amy yesterday. Nath Atkins.
Okay, yeah. All, I think he came from an iPhone. So she's iPhone, he's iPhone, she was messaging me about that. Once again, iPhone working. Okay, what's the other one?
Um, who was the other? Well, that was like both the port. This is three hours ago, got it, and invitees involved. Oh, the other one was Amit's test, Amit's test phone.
Yesterday?
Yeah, yesterday I
I don't recall discussing that yesterday with you.
No, no, apart from you, I only, like, we did not discuss, but I installed it.
We should, this should be part of your update, right?
First, like earlier, I requested Jerry like uh, two days before, my test phone to reset that test phone. So when I was testing with Jerry on WhatsApp link, no, that time.
Okay, so what did you test and what were the results of the test?
No, like normal testing, it was like uh, Jerry, uh, Jerry sent me invite link, no, WhatsApp.
The test was, sent you a WhatsApp link from his phone here in the United States on a VPN?
But I did not receive the link that day.
It probably had a link, it probably had an invite in the system from that number. Cuz yeah, this is one of those numbers that Amit's having me clear out.
So it had one, like, on standby, basically? Or you sent him a link yesterday?
No, there's a link from, yeah.
Friday, Friday.
Okay. I see, so the install that happened yesterday was from a link click a few days ago?
So yesterday, like, see, yesterday I did install from the App Store, not from the link since I did not receive the link on the WhatsApp, so I installed it from the App Store.
What do you mean, you didn't receive it from WhatsApp?
And JD was not able to send me link, do you remember, on Friday?
Yeah, probably one of the test links.
Okay, so the link did not send properly?
I think this is just because Amit had me clear this account out multiple times, I don't think, I don't think anything of this is a valid test. Yeah, I don't think it was intended to be a test. I think he was just onboarding with this new number.
The link now.
Well, now the, the user's already enrolled.
Yeah, but you could clear it.
Yeah, well then we'd be testing it. Yeah, it was a test.
All right, so the only install again was from an iPhone.
That's what it looks like, yes.
So again, Android's failing us and we don't know why. And then if we wanna go this other route, we're gonna be paying for it heavily. And maybe not get as good a result as we would P two P. Really wish we knew why it's weren't working. All right, so then what am I looking at?
Oh, this is just the report we were uh, investigating where the invitees came from. But then we were looking at.
So, can you go back to that real quick? Okay, so these are invites sent yesterday?
These are invitees that enrolled yesterday.
Crazy, there's so many sent, and you had, you said there was nine clicks, right?
At least nine, so we go and go back to here. It says twelve. Uh, shoot, um, here. It says twelve and nine are from South Africa, three are US, but they could be um, people on a US VPN. Me for sure.
Right, so eight of them from South Africa?
But no, nine, at least nine for sure.
But one of them's you?
No, I'm the US one.
Okay, so nine from South Africa, we're clear. One of them was Nathan. Potentially.
What is this, Bar West invites you to Circles?
How did that get in there? Well, I guess three of them are from the United States, right?
Uh, oh, this is me testing, that's why. This is one of my test links. You can, all because this, this ID is very low.
And that one would account for the United States one anyway, right? Portia invited someone. Ask her if that one.
Someone Melrose to invites, oh, three, three clicks, shoot.
What's three clicks?
Uh, whoever Melrose is.
Yeah, what does that mean?
Um, they sent out three invites that got clicked. So let me find, let's see, Circle invite request.
There's something breaking down there. What is it? There's just no way that many clicks keep happening with not a single install.
No, Melrose Numbuelo. I mean, that's a user I would probably recommend reaching out to. They sent out three invites, it seems like they all got clicked.
What does that have to do with Portia?
Um, this person ever clicks in Portia.
I know, but was there a connection?
I do not think so. Nothing I saw.
Cuz Portia sent at least one invite that was clicked on yesterday, right? Okay, I have a dialogue with her, so I can get more info, and then this other person, Melrose, said, I can see one, two, three, four, five people in her Circle Trust, and you said three were clicked, that's a nice conversion rate. There is something wrong. There's something wrong, obviously, something wrong. And these are three unique clicks, right? It's not like Melrose clicked her own?
I can get information on that.
Let's do that, just to be sure, so a sanity check, we're, but these are three unique users out of the five she sent. We're a month in on this of missing out on these conversions. Send me, um, when you're done with this. Um, send me her WhatsApp, her phone number, I wanna try and retry on WhatsApp if I can't get hold of her in Circles.
Melrose? Yeah, these are unique, um, so.
So they clicked them, so they, they got the, they got the invite. She sent five, three got, three, at least three got it and clicked it. How do we know they're going to the Play Store? What if they click it and they get that five hundred error? Or some other error, you know? I bet, I wonder, I just wonder like if we saw, if we were sitting there watching them do it, if every single one of them is getting the same error every time, and we're like, oh my god. That's it. That's the problem right there. What, what is the five hundred error again? I mean, I remember that was like a Huawei phone issue.
Yeah, it was something that if the, the phone didn't have like valid play services or like didn't have the place.
Yeah, 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 that, that's our problem, okay, I don't know that it's, like, ob- obviously not everyone has a Huawei phone, but everybody is blocked, everybody's blocked. So they're all blocked cuz of this play, like, token, if some, something is saying, no, you're not valid. Because of our link, like, instead of like, obviously, if they come through AdWords, we're getting thousands upon thousands of installs. But that's, that's Google's link, that's them driving the traffic to their Play Store, it's all in their ecosystem, but when it's our link, they say no. You are not permitted in here.
We've also tried sending them direct links to the Play Store. Yeah, that's what we did before switching to Bitly.
And perhaps the way it's generated.
That's the, it's the same URL you would see as if you looked it up on Google yourself.
Yeah, when I was doing the AI review, it was saying if it's, I forget how it worded it, but if the way we generate it within our app, it's not the same as them, as like that user generating it, even though it's within the, their WhatsApp app. Because it originally, I forget how it was worded, but it has more risk associated to it.
And what did it suggest was that was the proper way to generate it?
It had all those suggestions of like, try using a Bitly link, try, there was other things too, like, that we're not gonna do, like, um.
Cuz all these clicks have been Bitly.
True, it was, there was four, five, six suggestions.
This user actually just clicked on, you know, go contact Melrose, I bet they're still online. Then just somebody clicked invite like an hour ago. Yeah, so far, the only user I would say is Melrose and Portia. Cuz like, out of, out of three people, one of them had to say something, right?
You would think. I just sent Melrose a message. I get a response. What, what link did we send to who?
What do you mean, what link?
You said we tested the link.
Tested the link, the Bitly link?
No, just before I started messaging her, you were saying, we tried a test where we used this link and they went to the App Store, but I don't recall how we generated it and who we sent it to and how that.
Yeah, something you were saying that the AI was saying something wrong with generating the link, and you said the AI recommended that we use a Bitly link. I'm like, well, all the clicks we had yesterday were Bitly links. I don't know what other suggestions they had that could potentially make it wrong.
One second. I'm gonna make sure Cory doesn't message her too, cuz sometimes we greet people and like welcome and whatnot. They might have already, how long ago did this person onboard?
Who is it, John?
Melrose.
Yeah, Melrose was greeted.
Whatever, that's fine.
And that was, that just happened to like like, just now.
Yeah, an hour ago. Perfect, like, cuz I just messaged two minutes ago, so what do you mean by just now?
Like ten oh three. Like ten oh three.
I'm frustrated. Who did it?
It was Lisa.
I thought we were gonna pause on that.
Oh, they got up and started. Looking at the messages coming in, reaching out.
Yeah. Okay, well. Let's continue, um. I'll try and get more information, I'll ask Portia as well. So the, the link, we didn't look at the one you said. I saw on your screen there, Portia had messaged somebody or invited somebody and they clicked the link, is that right?
Yep, you wanna find out who?
Yeah.
Portia, oh shoot, um. Oh, come on, just let me copy the link.
What was that link generator?
Um, finding out thirty six or five. Mine, oh, it looks like it was generated, oh, just like thirty, thirty minutes ago?
Do you have a name of the friend?
I'm finding user content where. Now lady, let's see, is that it? This is Portia Choan, is that, that's it? Is this the same Portia?
No.
No, this is a different Portia then.
Okay, I won't send that message in. Okay, um. So then, um, yeah. Just in this vortex forever. I don't know, I'll try and get some more information. Maybe Melrose will get back to me. In the meantime, I still suspect. That when they click the link. They're blocked, blocked in some way, which we've seen. And saw for the Huawei phone, we've seen it. So. What else can do it? That would be where I would be looking.
Well, we also have the WhatsApp attempt that we wanna try.
What's that now?
Like, I, I don't want, that's my last resort, I don't wanna.
I don't wanna not do the P two P and pay them for every invite that's sent. That's a, that's a last resort. I wanna, I want our system to work. And when it works, it works here in the United States, it works, it's apparently with iPhones. Yeah, overseas, just not. With Androids, which is where I'm getting all the downloads is through. Google and AdWords, Google Play, it's like a whole. It's a. Treasure trove. But missing. This very, very key component to it, so it's like. Having a really, really nice car, but only has three wheels on it. No good. No, no point in having a Ferrari. It's got, it's only got three wheels, can't really use it. Really shame. Feel like really like to get this resolved. So, uh, yeah, we'll. Come back to it. Do you have anything more you wanna add here?
Uh, for the invites, no, not right now. Uh, just the last thing I didn't mention yet is Todd is gonna have me do some configuration for the live in links. Just like, so they get slotted into.
Okay, cool.
That's, um, that's all I have to share right now.
Okay, very good. Alright, thank you, Jerry. Um, Ismail, let's get your update, please.
Yeah, sure, um, so yeah, I continued working on the. On morning. Yesterday, um, Amin finished reviewing it this morning, he had some feedback, so I'm just kind of addressing those and going back and forth with him, trying to. Get this thing, um, stable and catch any potential bugs before we push up. Um, I also looked into. The error you're having when you save the video and. I think the problem is that you. Gave your phone limited access to the photos, is that correct? You're gonna give it full access.
Right, limited access.
Yes, so what happens is we do this thing where when we save a video, we're trying to. Uh, check if there's a circle album and if there isn't, create one. Um, now that requires full access, um. Yeah, in order to do that, so, so because it's requiring full access, that, um, promise will fail. When it tries to resolve, therefore relating to that. Toast showing the air toast. Now, we'll still save the video. But you will get the toast. Now, we have two options here. The option that I did right now is. If we don't have limited access, I just feel like don't check for the album, don't worry about the album, just save the video.
Yeah, why, why do we, why does an album even come into play? Why not just save the video?
We don't need it, I think, uh, it's just a nice to have, um, I think, um.
I don't remember discussing it, it sounds nice on the surface, but then unintended consequences.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I, you worked on this, did, did, do we need the album or is, was this just that to keep it more organized?
No, just to keep it more organized, if I remember, like.
Okay, um, well.
I don't, I've never really experienced that where I've downloaded something from an app and they're like creating an album for me.
For me, yeah, like WhatsApp does that. Does that, like Twitter does that.
I bet they must do a check to see if you allow full access or limited access, cause it, it sounds like we can't create the album. If the user.
Yeah, if, like, on my phone, it did create it when I saved, um.
But I thought you said, if you don't allow full access.
Well, yeah, that's, that's, that's what I'm getting to, so.
Full access of the photo album?
Right.
Yeah, cause you can allow limited access with Apple or full. If you do limited, it can't search all your, so. The, that, how that, that, how you have that code, I mean, is that it needs to go to see if there's already a Circle's album, so does it create a new one, if there is, it adds it to it.
If, uh, if I remember, it does that. Uh, also if it doesn't, um.
No, okay. Like, the logic is fine, there's nothing wrong with the logic, it's just that it needs full access.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking about, it's weird to get the full album. Like, access if you wanna just create an album.
Well, it's because in the logic, you are, um, you're also, so. We, 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 what we do is get album async, you're, you're trying to see if the album exists first. That's the part that requires the access.
I feel like that's, um, yeah, um, I don't remember if that's, um, yeah, permission needed.
You need full access, like, if, if you have full access, that good album will work, if you have limited access or no access to them won't.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
Um, and then you say if album is not, you created, if it already exists, you just add to it.
Well, I'll, okay, yeah, I get it, um, yeah, yeah. Maybe, maybe, like, I'm not sure, but like, look up if that function that creates the album has an option to. Override or like create or update kind of thing, you know?
Um, what do you mean by override, override what?
Now, right, like, so instead of checking if there is an album. You ha- uh, look up the API and see the function that creates the album. Has some sort of options or prop you can set there. Something that looks like, if the album does not, uh, exist, create it, something like.
Well, we wanna know if it exists or not until it gets.
I'm talking about the function itself that creates that, it could be there, like, cause this concept for updates.
Still need, I mean, I would check, but I think.
Yeah.
What, what, what I did was, I looked at, like, you can, we know the kind of permission we have if it's all or limited. So I'm, what I said is if it's all, go ahead and create the album, check it, create it, yada, yada. If the access is limited, just don't create the album, just save the video.
Yeah, um, yeah, that's fine, I was just like stretching it out a little bit, well, like, yeah. If this is a permission issue, then there's nothing we can do about it.
Yeah, I mean, I'll, I'll check what you said, but, um, if I don't find anything, it, does that sound fine to everyone? Where limited access equals no album, full access, we can create an album, keep things organized.
Can you repeat that question?
Yeah, full access, we create the album, keep things organized. If you don't have full access, just limited access, we just save the video without creating album.
Yeah, that, that's what I was saying a minute ago, I'm assuming that WhatsApp and Twitter or whatever. The ones that Amin was recommending, not recommending, but. Was explaining that they do the album, they must do some kind of check.
What I'm saying is, yeah, we'll, we'll save an album if the user gave us full access. If they did not give us full access, we just save the video without creating an album.
Okay, yeah, it sounds good, again, as long as that works.
Works, yeah, I mean, in terms of functionality, it works.
Okay, it'll always create an album with the full access?
With full access, yes, so we create an album.
Okay, sure, then, yeah, let's, uh, let's do that, can you make that change?
I already did it.
Okay, nice, alright.
Yeah.
Yes, cool.
Um, so, yeah, that's that, um, no, that being said, I, um. Yeah, back to, yeah, the last thing I need to do is just work with Amin a little bit on this PR that as I mentioned, um. Said a few points he was pointing out, um. I mean, so for the PR, uh, I guess, again, the main. Purpose of this is having, again, a one source of truth. Um, to indicate if the user on boarded or not, um, now. Uh, I see one thing you mentioned, which was, so. I, I, I went over your comments, yes, the one where we're using the navigation key, we should be using authentication up there instead of. The persistent, so that's a, that's, that's, uh, that one I, I fixed. Um, now for the one that, and also the one that you mentioned that we have to remove, yes, those were not needed. Um, that was part of initial approach that didn't work, so. Yeah, those were also removed, um, now. I guess the last two that are pending here is, one is the, um. Uh, the dispatches can, can get called multiple times, it looks like, um. From what I'm understanding here, from the.
Yeah. Um, I feel like didn't like fully, like, get it, um, but like the AI pointed out. Because like this, we'll say it there, so I, I figured, um, you worked on this with the cloud back and forth. You'll get what he mean by like double watch effect, I, I didn't get that.
So, so I guess what they mean here is. The main reason, I mean, if, it says like the issue is that, uh. Um, that, like. So what they're saying is, what they recommend is adding a, a check to prevent redundant dispatch, um. Or only during authentication state, so I guess that's kind of the, the main. Problem they have with that, um. Let me see here. See, one second. So, because the way it has it organized is, I guess, it's just throwing me off a little bit, is it referring to the same thing here, um? So it says, yeah, it's part of the same.
Do you still have the session, like the cloud session? That initiated that code for you?
Yeah, I mean, it, it saves it in history.
So, yeah, go back to that and resume that conver- conversation, if there is a way. And just based that, uh, remark. About that double watch effect, and see, since yours, like, your, your conversation has more context than mine.
Correct, and I was looking at it and it was suggesting to add that check, but once it added it, it. It kind of broke the, it, it start, I started seeing a black screen.
Okay, I see, yeah.
So, it really.
Again, yeah, um, I just like, uh.
It could be overlooking something here, um. But, I mean, what do you think of the overall?
It's like, that's, I was saying, like, don't take it as like, that's. Like, the AI, like the review, the AI did for me is correct, hundred percent, that, just there to. Like, confirm that. That or not, because I just only like show you three, that I thought maybe you need to. Look at them, because like they were like six or seven points, the other ones, they're not that valid and they were not like related, so. I just get the one that I need, that I think that I, you need to verify the valid or not.
Yeah, yeah, um, yeah, but I mean, out of the ones that. The frame request one, that one I, I would probably ignore, cause we need that one, that's the only valid way I found to work with the laser.
About that one, it was like, not to remove it, but like to change it, to, to not.
But then, we. Which I get it, but the only thing with interaction manager is that. It waits for everything to finish and then it, it runs, right? Where the frame is the opposite, it runs as soon as the screen loads, so therefore you would have. Smaller splash screen time, that's, that's kind of the reason I, I chose that over the interaction manager. Is because I don't want it to run as a side fact, I don't want it to run as soon as the screen is ready, like as soon as the, as soon as it loads, therefore lower splash time. Or, yeah, the splash screen time. Trying to minimize that to as low as possible. Um, so if it's not problematic, I'd rather keep the animation frame one. If, if it is problematic and there's a valid issue, um. Then, yeah, we can consider using the interaction manager, it'll, it'll just probably be a little slower.
I know, like, um, keep what's, what's working for you, the idea just like to.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just sharing my, my thought process here. And then we have, yeah, so, so the only one I see, yeah, uh, yeah, so but like the other ones you, the other comments were valid. The ones you had above, uh, now the AI one, yeah, I, I just need to look more into that double effect, uh, why does that is saying? Um, because I, um, so a tricky part of getting this new flow to work was when you finish onboarding. You're, uh, you're supposed to load the new stack, right? Um.
Yeah.
Like, and that was not working on, on initially, and then I think the way we got it to work. Was with this use effect right here. Um, and now after I made the changes, it went back to the black screen, so. Um, I think it's needed, I just need to s- better understand, cause like, uh, that black screen one, it was. It was basically saying that we need to let the provider know that we finished onboarding. Um, to display basically the next stack and, um. It suggested that we do it like this, which did work, so. I think it might be needed, the double watch or the thing it's complaining about, but. And like I said, I, I'll, I'll do more research on that last piece. Yeah, and then after I'm done, I'll, I'll send you over the PR one more time, take one last look. Um, but that being said. Since you looked at this, um, do you like this approach overall? I know it's a little different than the one we had. Um, it's not crazy, but, but.
Yeah, it's not, but like, it's like, um, it's robust, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll, uh, I'll look at, yeah, more code, but like, it's, it's, it's robust, uh, I'm sure it's, um. It's gonna be like, uh, like, yeah, it's, it's, it's gonna be solid, it's not gonna be leading to any other issues, so, yeah, it's.
And this is to, to address what?
The onboarding.
The onboard, the sudden onboarding?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Um, I was gonna ask about that. I mentioned Todd, it happened to Todd yesterday, so this would address that?
Um, potentially, it's a shit, um.
But, yeah, oh, but we need to look into that Todd issues there, like, I. Well, yeah, oh, but we need to look into that Todd issues there, like, I did some logs. If he's in the correct version, uh, we would be able to see some logs that might help us identify. What was the cause for Todd to be, um.
So he, 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 he backgrounded that, right, I mean, uh, before.
Maybe the user key or the phone number he used, so I can get his system replay and see the logs.
And we sent Amin the phone number, that who we were on.
Yeah, no problem, and, and it wasn't backgrounded.
It kind of was, in the sense of your phone was at, like, the lock screen, right?
Right, I, yeah, correct, I, I didn't background it, I just, the phone went dark on its own, when I had.
So that, that would consider, like, it would, it would treat it as if.
Gotcha.
Um.
But it, it is, it is worth noting that. The app was the last thing open, like, it wasn't like he backgrounded it, then the phone went dark. I know, I know, backgrounding it is essentially.
Well, well, what I'm saying is, whether he backgrounded it or not, or the phone went dark, regardless, it, it will treat it as if it's backgrounded.
Okay, it's exactly the same, like?
Um, yeah, in terms of.
Yeah, it is exactly the same, like, it's like, I like apps, uh, everything on the phone, it's an app, like, but your, your home screen, it's an app.
Oh, I see.
If the lock screen is an app, like, if you're not, if in this app, you are in this app.
That, that's interesting, okay, I never, never knew that, okay, that makes sense, so, yeah, so it went dark on him, so backgrounded. And then.
That's, so that's, that's where I, um, that's where. That's where this thing can, can, can get tricky, and hopefully this new code could work. I mean, what I, what I'm, what I'm guessing is, the reason this happens, like, the only way I can see it possibly happen is. One of those checks that it does, to determine if the user's onboarded or not. Um, determine the user was not onboarded, whether it returned undefined or false, or. Or, or anything like that, and that's, and that's where, that's where hopefully this would, this code would come in. Because like, now we don't, we're not checking like multiple sources that can determine, like, we just have the Firebase, that's our main source of truth. Um, to determine if the user's authenticated or not, um. And it, it doesn't rely on the, on the, well, I guess, the value is ca- is it cached? Uh, I think we call it Firebase API, so, um.
Yeah, it is cached, it is cached in the storage with the Firebase, yeah.
With the Firebase, yeah.
Yeah, the Firebase, how they do like, they cache stuff to the, to the storage. So, when you, like, yeah, it's, like, it, it leans back to the storage first.
Yeah, but, but if we have that as our only source of truth, which that's what I, that was the whole plan, we blew with this, is that not to rely on the persistent user. I rely on the persistent user for API calls and for all that. Um, so, that stayed the same. It's just, I didn't want to rely, like, the whole purpose of this was, I didn't want to rely on persistent user for the onboarding process. Like, to check if the user's authenticator or not, or onboarded or not, I wanted to rely on Firebase. And make that the only source of truth.
Yeah, I get it, um, yeah, that's, that's why I told you, like, it's, it's like a good.
So, uh, yeah, again, I think that probably would help with this, um, now, the only thing I need to check was, let me think here. Yeah, you, you, you asked a good question, and authen- and authenticated, does me onboarded? I just have to review to see, because like.
Mm-hmm.
When I first worked on this, um, it was, it, it gave, it gave me a bit of like steps, like. We can apparently save there. Like, uh, um, what was it, if, if they were. Uh, like, at the SMS part, if they finished SMS, but didn't finish onboarding, and there, there was like a bunch of steps that we could, states that we could get from Firebase. But the only ones, but then I removed all those, because we don't need them, but the only ones we care about is either they're, either authenticated or not. Like, if they're onboarded or not, we don't care about anything in between.
Okay.
Because, yeah, we don't use that anyway, we just wanted to know if we want to put them on the onboarding screen, or put them on, yeah, the, the other flow. So, so, yeah. Um, but yeah, that's, that's pretty much, I guess, that should kind of maybe answer all your. Comments, except the one for the double, uh, double effect washers, I'll, I'll, I just want to do my digging on that, and I'll, I'll, I'll send you what I, my, my final thoughts.
Alright.
Okay, so, wh- where are we with, we have, we had basically three potential problems with splash screens and. Going, like, getting unexpectedly logged out, wh- where are we with all the?
This is just the onboarding so far.
Getting unexpectedly logged out, or?
Yes, that's the one.
That one, okay.
Yeah, this has nothing to do with the splash screen, or the, 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 uh. Random restarts, this is mainly getting logged out.
Okay. I mean, were you able to look up and find Todd's session replays, or any?
I'm trying to find it, because we still didn't find it, um.
Hmm, and also, I mean, one more thing is that use of that, well, I'm trying to think, so. For logging out, if, if, that use effect is safe, right, the one that has only for version two. Like, do we still need that code, you think?
They use effect for log out, uh, I'm not sure I remember.
Yeah, they use effect for log out, um, whether there's version two, um.
Oh. Yeah, that's very old, I don't think, seen you there, I, I don't remember why it was there, but it was like.
So it's there for users who, who have version. Virgin, less than two point O, I think. So they're still on the very old version circles. And there was a reason why we needed to, but, what I'm saying, this is like over a year, like, over a year and a half ago, so. Um, I don't know if it's still needed, and I don't know if it has anything to do with this, I mean, it's, it is a use effect that runs once. But it is a log out nonetheless. So. Not saying this is the problem, but what I'm saying is, I feel like we don't, maybe we shouldn't, we shouldn't have it anymore, it's, it's been over a year and a half.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
And the, what was the reasoning for it, originally?
Users who, who, who have the app installed, and they have an updated app in over a year and a half, we wanted to log them out.
Okay, because they would have problems with that version.
Yeah.
So. What do you think, I mean, is it possible that it's been having a problem?
No, because like, we have a condition, we check into version number.
Yeah, I would say it's unlikely, but I would say, we probably don't need it, I'll, what I'm arguing is, it's probably better to remove it at this point.
Okay, um, I think you're right, um. I want to, I'm gonna ask a question here, so. What is the cause, why did Todd get unexpectedly logged out? I know, I, I want to know. What you guys think?
I'm trying to find this issue, if we find this issue, we might get, um, answers to that.
And by that, I mean, all users, so, not just Todd, but, you know, so, i- if, when this happens. Let's assume that it's always the same issue, okay?
Yeah.
And with that said, what is it that you guys have concluded? Like, let's say, this didn't happen to Todd yesterday, let's say, you weren't trying to find a session replay, and we don't have any logs, just based on where we stand right at this moment. What is it that you attribute the cause to? What is causing this to happen to users?
I would say, since it was in the background, and the app wrote back some code that we had, that we run. Like, we watch if the app is inactive, we do check some code, and there's some code that we do it implicitly, so that is others. So, other code that is explicit, maybe that one that's explicit code. It, it tries to verify again Todd's session, and by that, how it tries to do, it's like. To grab that session from the storage, maybe that failed, or take longer than it was expected. And it clashes out with other thing, how it is set up right now, it causes this, like, um, this, this issue. Uh, yeah, this, I'm just assuming, thinking of how the code is right for the.
Yeah, that's a logical, uh, explanation, so, we are changing the explicit check?
Yeah, yeah, all of, all of that, like, um, it's been working on.
I see, okay, it will no longer be an explicit check, too.
Y- yeah, you, you can see that, while, like, if I can find the situation with the logs, we can.
Okay, and I can give a bit of information, I don't know if this changes anything, but. Um, when, when he was using the app, and then let the phone go into sleep. Uh, when he, uh, brought it out of sleep. It, it didn't go to a splash screen, it didn't, like, I don't, he didn't even briefly see where he was in the app. Like, he, when he brought it out of sleep, he was at the welcome screen with the tropical, with the palm trees, like, he was already there instantly. So, it was like, it did that in the background, I don't know if that helps.
Yeah, so it's not like, uh, the app reloaded for him, and he, and we tried to catch up where he was. It failed, it's more like, again, the explicit, so that runs on itself whenever the app goes back active. Causes this, this issue, that's why there was like most plus screen.
So that would line up with your hypothesis?
Yeah.
Okay.
But, so are you saying it's something with the, with like an app state function?
So you see that on, is onboarding completed at him, that's always false. And maybe that's like override the other state, you know? The.
Like, I mean, like, the, like, the only way that could happen is that if it registers the user as a guest, and not as a user, right?
Well, he's, he's gonna be registered now as a guest, because.
Correct, but what I'm saying, that's the only way this could happen, like, it can't.
Also, also those keys you see in the React navigation screens, those are, those keys are just. They are not, that decides what should be on the screen, more like those are for optimizing, like, the, the React tree. So it's like it do efficient, uh, reconciliation, the keys help react to reconcile. React tree faster, and so, they're, 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 they're important to have them, like, in this case, there for, um. React navigation, and also React navigation, we can manage them, but, but it's not what's determined. It's onboarding or not, it's like the if condition that we have in there, you see that? If the.
Yeah, yeah, the, the one with the or, like, if.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's the one that's really decides what's to go on, on the screen. So, maybe here for Todd, that condition, uh. It didn't work as, as expected, because it was, uh, it was flawed, and maybe that local state, that's always false, that onboarding completed. That's always false, maybe that, um.
But we're, what we've done addresses these.
Yeah, yeah, uh, it's only that, just this, but again, uh, if you guys can help me find the session, I couldn't find it.
I can, um, uh, Todd, do you, first of all, do you have his user ID, I mean?
Yeah, send me the phone number, I, like, the phone, with the phone number and the, and the timestamps. I went back to that timestamp, and I couldn't find anything.
I would, I would look it up by user ID.
Yeah, um.
Do you have the user ID?
No, I don't.
Um, Jerry can get it. Jerry. Todd's user ID?
Eight O five.
Okay, so then we go and we search by user ID, and then we have the timestamp of when he messaged Slack, so let me try that. User ID is. Okay, and we're gonna be twenty-four hours, um. And then, what was that timestamp, Todd said, I'll have to look it up, when he messaged Slack?
It was five thirty PST.
Five thirty PST?
Thirteen, thirteen, not thirteen, but five thirteen.
Good.
Um.
Which would be. Uh, I'm gonna do some reverse math, I wish they had the times next to these. They have like seventeen hours ago, sixteen hours ago, it's like, not exactly helpful, okay, five thirteen would have been. Seventeen hours ago, seventeen or eighteen hours ago, okay, let's see what we got. Actually, I know a better way, I can also filter by his onboarding.
I got, I'm going through the session replays one by one, I don't see one that.
I think I got it, um, let me double check. Yeah, this is the one. Where it's at onboarding. One second, I gotta. I'll just throw it in development channel here. Okay, so this is, it would have been the one right before this. And this one happened at. At twelve. I'll get the one that's right before, because now I have a gap, you know, so, now this is the one where, he was in it for thirty-seven minutes, I don't know that, how much of a. Tell that is, but his replay right before, I'm sending it now, and so, it's like, he was, uh, it was a thirty-seven minute session. I have a feeling that has something to do with something, on the longer session, but, um, okay. I sent it in development, so the first one is the onboarding, and then the second one I sent would be the session.
Mm-hmm, okay, uh, logs.
Jerry, did you ever, uh, prepare a message to send through Twilio? I think I sent you the updated, uh, text. Should probably do that, if we're gonna do it, do it now.
Okay, yeah, I can do that, uh, who are we gonna, who are we gonna target this to?
You'll find, like, I'd say, like, three users in the last. Four or five days, who invited at least three people, maybe a little bit more. Don't, don't hit, like, Melrose, don't hit people like Amy, like, you know, avoid our team, so we can get a clean slate. But, um, yeah, you had identified some people, like, one guy invited like ten people, re- fairly recently, I think, so.
Yeah.
You'll, you'll see soon.
Yeah, let me get that in there.
Okay.
Should it be nothing, let's see. I'll send that, yeah.
Okay.
So, I need to check the logs, what did fails, and it causes start to be an onboarding is the Apollo cache. We see in whether the onboard didn't completed in the Apollo cache, and that's persisted to the sto- to the storage.
Okay.
And it's, yeah, and when we tried to fix that, it was no, it should not be no, it should be true.
Okay.
So.
So this is the direct, a direct link, cause, right?
Mm-hmm, yep, yeah.
What you suspected?
Yeah, I was suspecting that. I was suspecting one of the things that we were relying on. To get the value when it fitches it fails for some reason like. It was like a timeout or something. It fails to fetch the information and resulted in a in a null. And yeah, it just like cuz like we had like three things that are going on to verify whether this user is on board. They're just like. Wasn't sure with whether was it is it fireways? Or was it the Apollo cache or was it like our local state? But from the logs, it's Apollo cache. Why Apollo cache is failing here to fetch? Um the data from storage, I don't know. Uh let me look more.
Well, this is very, very good news, though, that you have zeroed in on exactly the cause, the root cause, not like. You had a general cause, but like now you know the targeted point of failure. So yeah, that um. Yeah, let's let me know what you come up with as far as like why it failed.
Yeah.
And that's great that we'll. Not have to worry about this in the future. Good good fix. Ismail, while he's looking into that, um first of all, that does that make sense to you too? Is that kind of what you were thinking?
Yeah, that's that was what I said where it those conditions were. False because it could have been undefined, which it was in this case, and that's exactly what I moved away from with this new approach.
Okay, with the assistance of the AI assisted on some of that to you. The approach.
Yeah, yeah, well, we, yeah, it it helped with with a lot of it, but like the. We yesterday when we were um on the going over this, we me and they both agreed that there was multiple sources of truth. And and looking back at it, um we were right and we there shouldn't be multiple sources of truth and then. On top of all that, we were. Like actually, yeah, I think the AI suggested where it would it the source of truth, even if we have one, was that Apollo cache? But now we are like, okay, no, let's not. We'll use that Apollo cache for API calls and stuff. But to determine if these is on boarded or not, we'll use the Firebase API itself instead of the Apollo.
Mm hmm, okay.
Uh so hopefully that one is more robust in terms of it won't fail.
What if, okay, what if it does fail?
I mean, if I if Firebase failed, that that's out of our control. At that point, that's like the best way we can do it is like. Authenticating using Firebase itself um in terms of verify if the user.
Now that's they're already logged in. They've been using the app for months.
Yes, yes, but if 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 you, okay, so if the cash for whatever reason fails.
Yeah.
Like it did now, we we know that it failed. We don't know why it failed, but we know that it failed.
Yeah.
That would cause the user to log out. Now, we're not gonna rely on the cash anymore, at least not on the Apollo cache. We're gonna rely on Firebase itself.
And and what is that? To me, that means like we have to do a network call.
No, well, one of our call. Um so. How how it is right now with the issue, we have the same information persisted. With Apollo cash to the storage and with Firebase persistent to the storage. And we want to check whether this user is logged in or not, on boarded or not. We fetch the one with Apollo cash from the storage and the other one with Firebase from the storage, then we have them both and. We check whether this is true, whether it's not true.
So this will tell we've been doing both.
Yeah, both. You will think like, yeah, we're being like solid, like we we're being like uh. To be like more accurate, meaning both of them to be bad. But like if you think about it more, it's like we're just strict in it. For no reason. One should be enough, you know?
Right.
And yeah, and the Apollo cache I seen here, why the Apollo cache failed for some reason, it just perched. There's like a log here that says uh here it says. Perched cash storage. We don't project um manually. So it happens automatically for whatever the reason Apollo thing.
Yeah, we had thirty seven minute session and then.
Um you say are you.
Yeah, in Todd's case, it was a thirty seven minute session and then silently backgrounded in a way like where. It makes sense to me why the phone like somewhere along the way, the cash got dropped.
Yeah, maybe it's hmm it's over um the storage was like uh. Like, I don't know, there was no more storage there or something and I was like, okay, I'm gonna just purge it.
Is there? Is this a clue to a free future proofing where we can? Always keep the Apollo storage manageable? Like if you have a one hour session. It's there's a way a mech some mechanism of maintaining a reasonable level of this cash. We don't we don't really, we never solved for that, did we?
Yeah, cuz like with our like why Apollo will like purge our cash if we're not doing it now. This is a very serious thing. Cuz like you delete everything.
Yeah, exactly. We don't want that. So how do we manage it along the way to where it doesn't build up to the extreme?
We need to know if you to know why Apollo things I should purge the cash.
My guess is it's a guess, but my guess is it got too big.
Long session, yeah.
In fact, I bet we could look at a pattern and see other cases where a long session preceded. This log out.
Hmm.
It's a it's a hypothesis, you know, I don't have I'm a I don't have proof, but I strongly suspected.
You suspecting uh can it be the again?
That whenever this occurs with this log out.
Mm hmm.
Log out Apollo cash failing, it was preceded by a very long session.
Yeah, yeah, like it was like a long session that resulted in the storage to be like filled.
Yeah, yeah, the other the other user reporting it. Was saying how when she's using the app for a while, she thought when she was writing a long text message and of course. It's not necessarily the long text message, but it's probably the long runtime of a session.
Mm hmm.
And that lines up with it's a different user besides Todd. So we that's probably that's kind of two confirmed cases. Of a long session preceding this issue, which me which suggests the Apollo cache is. Building and building, but not there's no air being released from this bubble.
Mm hmm. Um so there is two two things. Well, there's two like two Apollo caches. There's one. That's what we call it on the RAM. It's like while the app is running. And the one that gets persisted to the storage, the one that got deleted is the one that got persisted to the storage. And we don't save much there, just the user session.
That's that's where we should investigate. I bet I have a feeling we're saving too much there.
No, no, like I'm I'm seeing like like it's not too much like we're not keeping up. It's only when the user.
How like could you see on my like on my device, my session? Can you see how much I've persisted in cash? Is there like a way like without looking at the code, can you actually verify on a device? Confirm what you're suspecting. You're suspecting that we're not storing too much, but can you confirm that on a in a real world? Situation?
Um I don't we would be having the access to verify.
Cuz that's where you might be mistaken, you know, you it there may be something sneaking in.
Yeah, probably. That's why we're having this issue about like we're just saving an object. I mean, on an object like. Like max of the data that's gonna be there. It's gonna be in five hundred kilobytes or something like that. Yeah, cuz it was just saving your name. Your token.
We save that over and over again thirty times in a session.
It just override like it's now we do a.
That's what it's supposed to do.
Yeah, it's just supposed to override, but.
You know that it overrides.
It should be overriding cuz like.
You know that it overrides.
Uh I'm 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 like I'm trusting their APIs. If it's not cuz it's gonna be like a major issue and we would.
What if what if it wasn't their API? What if it was way way we configured it? And we are overriding their override.
Yeah, probably. That that Apollo setup was like a very long uh old code from the first days. We didn't touch that again.
Ismail, can you take that code that's from a long time ago, run it through that AI tool? And see if it. If it reveals this um a a risk that. That Apollo caches is is building up without being overwritten.
Hmm. And the code you need to check is like somewhere eh it's called Apollo client, a file called Apollo clients. There's like a folder there for Apollo that has all the files.
The Apollo client V two.
Yeah, there's that and there's other like um helpers going on there, but I think we're able to give the helpers.
Okay, let me do that in a separate PR though cuz this one is getting big, so let's let's wrap up this onboarding one and I'll take.
Well, yeah, um it's me as yeah would like fixes issue that Todd having after like looking the logs. But just we still don't know why, so that's.
Well, yeah, it'll fix it because we don't rely on the Apollo cash anymore. It won't fix the Apollo cash problem.
Yeah, that's why we're gonna do in another PR, so it's it's yeah, it's the same issue, but like technically they're and they're separating.
And and just to confirm Firebase is this check has nothing to do with any network calls like we're I don't I don't understand.
It fitches from the from from the storage. Yeah, I know that.
But how could, okay. What's the point of it if if it's never check like doing a network call? How does it get updated?
We don't do that cuz like once the user is logged in, we just save it to the storage. Like we say.
Why do we need to check anything?
To know if this this is the same user that is logged in like um I'm I'm not sure I'm following like.
Well, I guess I'm not asking the question the right way. If so, this check for yeah, so that let's start at the bottom. The check. Is to see if the user is logged in, right? That's the whole point.
Yeah.
Okay. How would we know if they aren't logged in if we don't do a network call to Firebase?
We don't do a call to Firebase. Like we check the storage first if they have a session saved. You see like I'm not sure uh you know, like the cookies.
Yeah, yeah. So session gets saved at the end of.
Yeah.
Session gets saved.
It's like. That's what Firebase do and they save it to the storage like the normal saving to a storage.
Every session. What if my what if my phone just uh loses battery power completely?
It just kinda turned off.
And how will it save like? Yeah, I know.
Yeah, it's the it's and it's like it's like a file that is saved somewhere in your. Your hard drive of your phone.
What if it doesn't get saved like, you know, cuz the? How often is it saved?
It says it's it's being saved one. I'm not gonna say a flaw. It it saved the ones. When when a user do a login, when when the user verifies his SMS code.
Yeah.
And his passes is that's where it saves only there.
I see, and it only changes if I log out.
If you log out, that file, it's gonna be deleted from your file from your phone.
Okay. So it's not there. From closing the app, but losing battery power or any?
No, that's like, I mean, that's like persist in it.
Yeah. Whereas the Apollo cache can change. For a variety of reasons.
Normal. Normally, the same concept, Apollo cash should not purge it.
But but it can get purged, whereas the Firebase one cannot get purged unless I explicitly log out.
Yep.
Okay, so that's much safer. Okay, I I understand. I just wanted to have an understanding of it. Okay. Okay, um great, so. We're relying on that is that that PR is reviewed. Is there any further changes to?
Yeah, yeah, I did review that. Went back and forth with mail on it. It's mail guy. He might know. See, I think he's working on it. He's doing another take on it, so. It's uh it's making us more on this.
Okay, Ismail, are you still looking at that that last PR or are you ready? Ready to ship it?
Um I'm almost ready. I'm still looking at it. I I made a few changes um. Some of them did not like, so I'm just kind of. I would say I yeah, just give me like a few, maybe thirty more minutes and I guess it should be done.
Okay, okay, sounds good. Okay, in the meantime, so I mean, where where are you now in the whole onboarding flow? Where where is that left on?
Um for me, like yesterday, I finished working on the nav bar thingy for um Android. Made sure that it's always there on onboarding. No buttons are being cropped out, no lathy cropped up or anything like I check three devices with um. Like all Android uh with Android ten with newer model and then all of that. Also check dialers. Looks uh good. There's no issues there too. Uh yeah, so that's the nav bar uh part also um worked on the button like that that um back button. The hardware back button, so as we agreed. Um on on the name and the phone and that's in a step if the keyboard is up and user pressed. On that arrow down, it's just gonna uh blur out the input because right now. It keeps it keeps like the the cursor. So these are things he he still needs to type in, but there's no keyboard. Uh so we fixed it. If a user pressed on that, um I mean, sharing my screen is gonna be easier.
Say maybe show me uh I I know what you're talking about, but I wanna see it.
Yeah. Um. Uh in a second, I need to present changes here. I'm doing some changes in my code um before cuz I've been working something else in a second.
Yeah, I'm right now. Message it's fine.
So, yeah, if if the the keyboard is up, meaning one of the inputs is focused, if the user press on this one. Yeah, you can see there's no cursor anymore. Before, it would be like the first time, it will be like a cursor blinking here. So we fixed that, and if the user.
Hold on just a sec, I wanna give you my full attention, but I'm, let me send this one, so.
Oh wow, um, John, let me know when you get a moment.
Um, uh, yeah, one second.
Yeah, yeah, then finish your thing.
Okay, go ahead, yeah, what's going on Jerry?
Okay, I sent the, the invites.
Yep.
Via the Twilio, um, I didn't realize it was gonna be that expensive.
Yeah.
So I, I sent twenty out.
Okay.
From three different users and it was fifty-five cents each.
Lovely, okay.
Yeah, that's, that's all.
Okay, oh, that's what you're gonna say?
Yeah, that's all I was gonna say, uh, so WhatsApp doesn't look so bad when you look at it from that point.
Yeah, I suppose, um, how, how many did you say were sent?
Twenty.
Twenty, okay, none clicked?
I literally just sent them.
Okay, okay, let me know, uh, if, when you get some clicks.
Yeah, got it.
Okay, just do another, find another ten, do another ten.
Okay.
Yeah, let's just cast a big net.
Alright.
Another ten, twenty, let's, let's just cast a wide net.
Okay, I mean, yeah, uh, just letting you know fifty-five cents each.
That's fine, if we fix it, it'll be worth a lot.
Okay.
Okay, thanks. Okay, go ahead, I mean, I'm watching now.
Yes, so, so this is how it's gonna be looking this screen, and if user on Android press on this button before, before this changes. The keyboard will be dismissed, but the input, you're gonna still have the, the focus and the cursor blinking. That was before, so that fixed now, so nothing, it's unfocused. If.
And the back button brings it into focus.
Yeah, the back button bringing back to.
Also, what if you tap in a name?
You mean, like, you got something?
Just making sure it also works when you tapped the name field, so that's good. Good, um, great, okay, so that forward button is still. Messing with you, huh? The forward button's not sitting.
Oh yeah, um, that, I didn't find a way to fix it. To have it closer to here. I, I did, but it seems it was missing up with the name. Like entry animations, like when things have been entered, it was like, it was causing the shit, and I was like, okay, I'll, I'll look at. Uh, I'm looking to it later, but I had to finish other stuff here with the nav bar, so, yeah, uh. I'll see what, what I can do, what I do have equality, so it looks good.
I, I mean, this is great.
Mm-hmm.
Like, I, I think we should do a build without that, just for saying. So yeah, cause otherwise, everything else seems to be functioning great, um, if you hit forward, it'll do the error, right?
Yep.
Good, cool, cool.
Also, mm-hmm. I was gonna say that it keeps track of what the im, the last input was focused, meaning so let's say, if I was like. Focusing the last name, and I do this and I'll do this, it will be the last name again, not the first name. Like, I'm here or here and going out to the first name. It was to go back to the first name, it remembers what was the last focused input, so we want to bring the focus in again. The target, that same input.
Great, okay, delete one of the names? And then hit forward, okay, now hit forward one more time? Yeah, okay, remember, we talked about this, it would be great if it did the animation again on please enter valid first name.
We, we doing, yeah, uh, maybe just for the phone, I guess, for the SMS, but we didn't explicitly do the here, did we?
I don't recall seeing it anywhere in the app yet, maybe I missed it. Cause I just see people, you know, tapping these forward buttons over and over with no input of any kind, or no, like output, I guess.
Uh, yeah, I'll, I'll do it here too.
Is it on the phone screen, or the birthday screen maybe?
Not birthday, but like phone or the SMS, one of those.
Okay, let's do it on all of them, so birthday as well.
Yeah, alright.
Is it, that's pretty easy?
Yeah.
Okay, let's uh, let's do it, let's do it now then, cause I, what I would like to do, if this is all good, we could have Ismail review this today, right?
Yeah, uh, it's, it's um, it's a medium PR, it's mainly it's a lot of time to review it.
I know, but in other words, the, it doesn't, you don't need to keep working on it, right?
Hmm, no, no, it's all done.
Okay, okay, great, then let's knock out the, those little things, okay, great.
Well, it did it if you press on it, now I'm.
Oh.
If you, yeah, did it, we want like, if the user.
Yeah, can you do, can you apply that?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll be right back, one sec.
Yeah, I mean, um, I think, yeah, I should be ready now, I, so for the code that, um, for the one where I was worried about the. Double watch and so on, so I, I mean, I have the console logs in there, it's, it's not, it's not calling the dispatch. Like I, it's closed when it first um loads the app, and then I use chat, I, you know, with two other screens. It's not just randomly calling it whenever you do something on the screen or call an API. So I think it's, 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 we should, it's something to worry about, um, and any change I make to it, um, will. Um, basically. Um, break the code, because. So. Uh. It's kind of tricky to kind of wrap my head around this exactly, but the main reason it was doing this is because. We get trapped in that black screen, like I said, if, if this is not working properly, and that's. And especially after you onboard.
Um, I mean, yeah, if you verified it and it was not like that as they are, then it's good.
So it's more like after the user onboard and the Firebase gets the data, whether it's they're onboarded or not, this is how we tell it that. We're ready to go. And it's not firing multiple times, and uh, so I, I think, I think we're good. We, um, yeah, I, I, I submitted the, I submitted the final code, so you can take a look at it now, it should adjust all the comments. Uh, but yeah, these are one of these PRs where we probably wanna hold off on merging, um. And test it very, very well.
Alright, yeah.
But wait, this is the PR with all the fixes to the logging out.
Yeah.
But you don't wanna merge it, okay, cause you.
By merging, I mean, like, we wanna create a PR for, for us, the QA team.
Okay.
But all looks good, no problems, solid, then we merge it, kinda like with eighty-eight.
Okay, that works, and then when we're done with this one, let's get this one in there too.
Let's what now?
This uh PR that Amin's working on right now, on this branch, let's, let's get this one in the build.
With the. Yeah, yeah, no, I'm not gonna, I'm not, I'll, 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 I'll create the build after Amin's done, but um, yeah, just kinda wanted to point out that. We do need to test this very, very well before we merge it, and especially for submit it to the public.
Okay, will do, um, okay, and then next you'll go to the AI tool with that one section of code, right? We were just talking about. Ismail.
For the, for the cache thing, yeah. Uh, for the Apollo cache, why, to see the setup is, is, is solid, is that what we're trying to do, right?
It's, if it's building up, like it's supposed to overwrite itself and not keep adding. Uh, more.
So, is that what it's doing?
Well, we don't know, but it seems that the logouts are preceded by long sessions. So that is a strong indication that the long session is building up excess cache.
Mm-hmm.
So the, that's right, and, and Amin said it was really old. Okay, yeah, and you said it was old. So you know what I mean.
All these things are just in the core of the app, so.
What, what I was saying is like, what I was saying, like the one that we persist. Shouldn't be that much, just like a few data now, but like the one.
Yeah, like the user data only.
Yeah, but the, but the cache that's on RAM, yeah, that could be more than what we think it could, because. We save a lot of uh stuff to Apollo cache on the RAM, not the storage on the RAM. It could be ten megabytes, twenty megabytes, thirteen, it could be even like fifteen hundred, yeah, that could be, because even if the, eh. Uh, especially if the user is active on chat, where we save images, videos and all of that, so, yeah, makes sense, like the RAM cache, yeah. The persisted one. That I know for sure, it's not anything above like five hundred kilobytes or something like that, but yeah. Uh, also like I checked, there is like a max size of the cache that Apollo do, which is five megabytes. Maybe Apollo does not um differentiate between the persisted one and the one on the RAM.
Hmm.
For Apollo, it's five megabytes, like even if it's just from the one on the RAM, it's. Okay, now you existed the limit which is five megabytes, so I'm gonna purge everything, maybe that's the case?
That's a good.
That's, it seems unlikely, and.
Yeah, but I know, but there is something like off there that we're not like.
Well, and also, now, now you have me nervous though, that on the RAM, we're, we're storing too much, what, what is our mechanism? To not.
No, the RAM one is basically as much, how, as much RAM as you have, like on your phone.
Yeah, but happens when it gets to the five megabyte limit.
Well, the RAM one is, well, no, the RAM one is not five megabyte, that one is gonna be, it can be up to like a gigabyte or more.
Yes, I, I, I is on a RAM, that's, that's nothing, that's really nothing, so.
Yeah.
But I thought you said that was the limit that it could store, I mean?
Yeah, we, that's, that's the default value they're doing, they're doing like five megabyte, if you proceed that, then delete. Purge the.
But you're talking about the persistent, not the RAM.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
That's, yeah, so.
Well, we still don't really know what's going on there, like with their, what's Apollo like doing, so. Yeah, this is go to the AI and see what's.
Yeah, I mean, I'll, I'll, I'll see what I can find, um, on that, and I'll, like, you know, I'll have it as a PR that ways.
Okay.
Um, and I'll probably submit one more PR just for that video, or do you want me to include the video in the onboarding? PR, do you want, do you want it in a separate one?
That's up to Amin.
Uh, true, let's, let's get them separate, it's easier on them.
Okay, okay, great, and then we'll wrap this up, and we'll get them all put together in a build.
Yes.
Fantastic, okay, thanks, Ismail, um.
And, you're done, uh, if you, if you press here now.
Uh, great. Um, how come it's not doing one for the last thing?
Yeah, that's all I was checking right now, um. It should fail, oh, I see why, it's an end. Um, let me see. Nope, it was. Mm-hmm. Uh, maybe it was like registering that, just didn't see it, cause I didn't type, and uh, so yeah, that's how it should be. Cause I would like saving, uh, the data.
Okay, great, what happened to the dog lottie, where's that? Uh, moved up, that's weird.
Because of this.
No, it was, that was already there, it was not at that high.
Alright, let's, we didn't see, uh. You see, he's in here.
I do see he's up there.
If I do this, see how it's been pushed a little bit?
Yeah. And then drop the keyboard? And then go put the keyboard back up? Okay, it seemed like it was.
This is because this is a smaller phone, by the way, this is a small phone.
Yeah, true, okay, I guess that'll happen on some small phones, it's fine.
Yeah.
Okay, no worries, so now, if you press forward, it'll animate. Alright, try and, I don't know, is there a way you can try and break this situation, like, use the keyboard up and down and like, test, uh, yeah, like. What happens if you like, yeah, hit that one and then come back, yeah, try, try a few different things. I wanna replace that logo today too, the main, like.
Yeah, um, it's mine as too.
Um, we don't have any character limit here, do we? Like, I think you can just type as long as you want.
Let's see, do we have anything on the phone then, um. It's only like the minimum, not the maximum.
John, what about people that type numbers in their name, like only numbers?
Alright.
But like, I know there are some people that are like post, that are like posting their WhatsApp number as their name.
That's not ideal, I know, I mean. I mean, we do have some profiles that are like nine-one-six events or something, or.
I mean, if, if it's something that we need to set, then we can set it from our end, if it's something. Use case.
Yeah.
It's just a suggestion.
I know, I've thought about it a lot, um. Uh, and then, nothing's ever straightforward, it's like if we block it, it could get in the way of, like, I came across a profile that was eight oh eight. Um, guest list or something, I don't know who created it. Yeah, well. We should probably have a max character limit, right? And if so, how best to handle it?
Well, I'll tell you what the backend supports.
Okay.
Fifty, it's what the backend supports, first name and last name each. Each, so fifty on the first, fifty on the last.
Yeah. So. We should probably do that, huh, I mean?
Okay, you want to do a max?
Yeah. Fifty's really long.
Yeah, um.
Maybe. Twenty?
Twenty, yeah.
And then, what would happen, would it just cut off, but like, if I went twenty-five, would it just cut off five?
Um, if I'm just following what we're doing right now, we're just gonna be like, your name is too long or something. User will not be able to proceed until it's, if it's it, the user can type as many as he want?
Yeah, I was gonna say, wh- why don't we just let him type as many as they want, and then we just truncate it to twenty? So they'll have to go change their name later, cuz they can always change their name in their bio, I, what I want is, I want people proceeding. Past the screen, I don't want people just messing around here the whole time or, and giving up.
Then, it's, yeah, I, I would say just let the user type, uh, um, like as many as he can, you want.
Okay, yeah, and then we'll just, we'll just chop it off at twenty?
Yeah.
Okay, let's do that, can you code it that way?
I don't have to, like, so the user cannot type.
Yeah.
Let's say now he, he's on the limit, if he typed like the G, we just de- delete it.
I see, that's even better, okay, cool, let's do that.
Okay. We said fifty or twenty?
Twenty.
Okay, let's test, um. Seems not working, um, I need to. You can see that. It's like.
Yeah, okay. Good, excellent, that's great, and that kinda fits in the input field too, so it's cool.
Yeah.
Great, okay, and last name as well?
Yeah.
Why does that one seem shorter, maybe just different letters to type?
Maybe, now, um, by twenty four, oh, what they mean, just verify, yep, it's the same code there. Let me just do a. Yep, see.
Cool, cool.
So, next screen?
Yeah. Wait, something goes wrong there, the Lottie was gone for what's her name? Maybe it was rerendering?
Yeah, it was fun.
Yeah, try to start it already?